9:30.
Right.
That's online now?
Yes.
That's on the...
Teams meeting.
Teams, yeah. The law director, we have Teams. We have Teams.
Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council Meeting of Monday, July 1st to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Snay.
All right. Father, you have prayed the way that I prayed mine. Lord, I'd like to stop to thank you for this day. Last couple of days, you have shown your glory. You show your glory in many different ways. But we ask that you give your wisdom upon all the members of the council and the city government. It's in your name. Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Snay.
Present.
Councilmember Thacker. Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Let the record show, six members of council are present this evening. Minutes from June 17th, regular and committee of the whole meetings minutes were distributed. Any questions, corrections, or deletions on these? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under a committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Madam President. A Personnel and Labor Relations Committee meeting was held in city chambers on June 24th, 2024. Purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 24-29, pay increase for non-union staff and other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members John Hayes, Cheyenne Thacker, and John Kayler. Also attending were councilmembers Kevin Reesner and Aaron Jones, Mayor Lee Wilkinson, City Administrator Nick Dutrow, and Law Director Zachary Fowler. Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Law Director Fowler explained that the proposed legislation will be amending a pay ordinance that was adopted last year, and what needs to be decided is when this pay raise will be effective. City Administrator Dutrow explained that the city traditionally bases the non-union wage increases on what the union negotiates. Dutro outlined who the pay increase applies to, and that when setting the 2024 budget, the city had decided to address this wage increase based on the city's 2024 collections at the middle of the year. Fowler mentioned that the Finance Director Kathy Kaufman wants the increase to start at the beginning of a pay period. Fowler also outlined council's options for deciding the effective date of the ordinance. Thacker stated that she is in favor of the increase, and Kayler recommended the effective date be July 1st. Dutro reminded the committee that this increase does not include elected officials. Councilwoman Thacker motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to accept the pay increase. Councilman Kayler seconded, and the motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 5:44 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions on that report? Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snay.
Madam President, no report at this time.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, does anyone from that committee have a report this evening?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. For Committee of the Whole, I'd just like to announce, next meeting, the Committee of the Whole meeting will start at 6:30 PM as opposed to 6:45, in order for some additional training for council to take place. We are now under reports of the officers, His Honor Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. So, this past week, in case you missed it, Heavenly Pizza had their grand opening of their national headquarters, just up the street here on Market. And it was, a good time was had by all. They are open for business, so anytime you're stopped by and you're hungry, they'll have something for you to eat there. If you've been downtown today, or maybe even yesterday, the stars on the sidewalks were placed by volunteers. That's the pet walk of fame stars. It's a fundraiser for the Humane Society. There's not a scavenger hunt involved. And all of those stars were paid for by the pet owners, and all the proceeds go to the Humane Society for putting on a new roof out there. Down at the parks, the pickleball and tennis courts are complete and ready for play. Next week, starting July 8th, there will be sewer scoping work. So, they're not going to be digging up the streets. Sewer scoping work on Washington Street. It will take place at night, so there won't be any disruption to midday traffic. So, that's going to be on Washington Street, all the way from St. Joe's down to Riverside Drive. In preparation for the July 18th, 3rd Thursday, the Christmas in July 3rd Thursday, the downtown Christmas lights are going to be lit on the 12th, so that they can be checked and repaired if any repairs need to be made, done over that weekend, in preparation for the Christmas in July 3rd Thursday. The Fire Department, in conjunction with the parks, is having a youth fire academy for kids 12 to 15 this week. I believe all the spots are taken, but it is an excellent opportunity each year for the Fire Department and the parks to do something for the kids. And I've heard about, like, all the activities going on during that week from Chief Chapel. It sounded like a great time. So, if you missed it this year, then be sure to put that on your calendar for next year, so you can sign up for that. That's for kids aged 12 to 15 at the parks, Youth Fire Academy. Thursday, July 4th, so looking forward to all the entertainment and the fireworks at the park. Festivities start at 9:00 AM with the car show. From 3:00 to 7:00, they have inflatables. 4:30 to 10:00, live music. And 10 o'clock, hopefully there's no rain or thunderstorms, that we'll have the fireworks. The pool's going to be open from 12 to 7:00, so if you're going to take advantage of the pool, then go online to the Parks and Rec website and get your pool passes early to, like, cut down on the lines getting into the pool area. And next, I'd like to introduce some members of our TMAC, Tiffin Municipal Arts Council. We have TJ McKee, Nick Consolo, and Pat Demonte is here in support. So...
Give it just a minute.
Sure. Thank you. I'm TJ McKee. As Mayor Wilkinson said, with me is Nick Consolo, the treasurer, and the vice chair. Unfortunately, Ryan, our chair, cannot be with us. He is ill. But we have been working diligently, so first thing we want to do, if you go to the next slide, is update you on some of the things we've actually accomplished so far this year within the six months. I'll have you talk about the placemaking grants.
Sure. So, last year, we put placemaking grants in effect. This allows art events, or anything that's kind of bringing art to the area, or art education to occur. We've had two recipients so far this year. Tiffin Art Guild, that was to increase some awards for the students. And then, the Studio 605 was for the Block Party, June 22nd. We also did the We Need the Chalk contest. That was downtown. We hope to kind of build on that event in the future. Court Street Market, last month, due to the high temperature, we canceled that, but we're looking forward to July, and that'll run into September. And then, Art Camp was successful. There was just under 50 participants for that, but really good turnout and a lot of good creativity.
We wanted to talk to you guys about a project that we've been working with. We partnered with the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Seneca County to do a 3D butterfly wing fabrication installation for 10 of these installations. If it makes it back up, you'll be able to see. Our timeline was first, we started working on this in June, and we took in submissions, so you guys may have seen some of the posting done on Facebook and so forth about looking for artists to actually create, next slide for me, please, to create the concept art. Our plan is to actually, this month, at our meeting next week, we will actually finalize the concept and start working with the artists to get a final rendering of what we want these 3D art pieces to look like. We will have the fabricator create the fabrication of the 3D art, and then have them installed and done by September, early part of October, with your approval, of course. Next slide. So, this project is basically our partnership with them, has become where we wanted to bring freestanding sculptures of art, and we asked artists for a concept art. However, our partnership with the Suicide Prevention Coalition, it was funny that we actually were all doing the same thing at the same time, and decided to join forces together. The plan is to actually have plaques on all of these installations that have QR codes that explain what the artist's inspiration was for, as well as some information on mental health. And I'm going to ask Pat to help explain that a little bit for us, as to what that looks like. Throw you on...
Thank you very much, Pat Demonte. And I'm with the, I'm actually not with TMAC or Suicide Prevention, but I had the idea, and I was sharing it with both of them, and then we just pulled it together. So, our mission or our goal is to promote positive mental health, and to provide resources to those who are suffering with, you know, mental illness, or who may have difficulty facing life's challenges. And so, we are hoping that these structures and these murals will create a positive message to them, that they matter, and that each person matters, and that if you're struggling, there are people here to help. As I've shared with the TMAC group, that I believe that art is beautiful, but with a message of hope, art is powerful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Our plan is to have 10 installations for this. I'm not going to read every slide to you guys, because I'm sure, Nick, if you will send it out to everyone, they can actually read it. But our objective, if you'll see there at the bottom, was one, making sure that TMAC actually put out public art installations on top of our traffic boxes that we do. Thought is to create a map, or kind of do like the geo-tagging that we did with the trail, to support the mental health awareness. Like we said, we wanted to give our local artists support as well, and get more onto their springboard, and then, of course, the beautification of our community and our city. Next slide, please. So, this is just an example of the idea of the plaques we talked about, silver, gold, with a QR code. It'll have the information on it as well, but wanted to give you guys kind of what that would look like, either at the base or attached to. We have not gone into those details, because that is going to be something we will work with the coalition on in placement. Next slide. As we said, for 10 of these, when we sat down with a meeting to talk about these funds that were allocated to us last year, told we would have access to part of TMAC, we had 10 locations, and looking at it, we need to make them into public locations. So, the plan is, you'll see Oakley Park, Tiffin University, Lyons Park, Huddberg. Those, Tiffin University, Huddberg are not public locations, but we think we can find public parks or public locations to put them near the vicinity, and still have those schools do the designs for that as well. But everything will be on a public placement, of a public, I don't know what you would call it, just public area, so that way, the city will have control of that art, and it won't ever be taken down without the city's approval. Next slide. This is some of the imagery for the concept art that we received. We had everything from the morpho butterfly, to talking about, if, for those who've been to Paris, or know about the Love Lock Wall, you actually have that, so there's a couple of designs for that. And so, these are some of the ones that we've chosen to have our inspiration from. The 3D designs will be cut specifically to fit each one of these images, and will be double-sided, and it is built on a plastic polymer, so it withstands the weather and so forth. Next slide. So, the 10th one is going to probably be the biggest. It is a full metal sculpture that is going to be put on Frost Parkway. Stands 10 feet tall, 6 feet wide, completely metal, so that way, it was a more prominent structure as coming in and being able to see from that. So, we want to make sure you guys got to see what that concept looked like as well. Next slide. And then, just some of the examples for what that looks like. You'll see the cost for that particular one is $4,950. And then, if you go to the next slide, the breakdown for the fabrication, we wanted to give you full details, so I will go through this. It will be done by BAM Signs out of Attica for us. They're built on a half-inch plastic, which will be done 3D. The wings, there'll be eight of these, that are eight by eight. The cost for just the fabrication itself is about $2,400. The expense for the concrete slab is $150. And then, the installation of the wrap, that'll be done by M-Lad from Tiffin, of course, is $150. So, that's the actual piece breakdown for each one of those. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that the cost breakdown for the eight by eights is about $3,100 each, which then, doing all nine installations, we're looking at a total of $27,900 for those nine installations. On the next slide. So, basically, our proposal is to do this wing project with the fabricated art. You'll see that we're using artist concepts that are local artists out of Tiffin in the local area, using BAM Signs, using M-Lad, which is another local business. I've gone over the timeline with you. If you'll look there, it'll give you like the project costs. So, we're looking at the eight by eight, which is $27,900. You're looking at the six by eight, which is the one major installation that'll be on Frost Parkway. So, basically, a total ask of $32,850, which should fit within the interest of the squirrel fund that we're asking for. And I believe that's the last of that slide, but next one? Yeah. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you guys will approve and consider this for us. If you have any questions, you can ask now.
Does anyone have any immediate questions? Law Director, I'm sorry, City Administrator?
For those council members who don't know what the squirrel fund is, in the early 2000s, the Chamber of Commerce at the time had a project where local groups would sponsor a giant ceramic, or I believe they were maybe fiberglass squirrel. If you go around town, you might find some of these. They're still kind of in the wild, but, to use a pun. They use those, then they auction those off. A portion of those funds came back to the city. So, there are some funds that are held at Tiffin Community Foundation. Previous Mayor, Mayor Yanantuno, had said to the TMAC at the time that funds from those could be used for a TMAC project. As far as what those funds could be used for, they are pretty set as far as the purpose. They're for beautification, and they're to be used in the public right-of-way. So, as Mr. McKee pointed out, using them in public spaces, parks, or, you know, in public right-of-way, does fit with the criteria of those funds. Ultimately, it's up to council if they're the ones who want to move forward with approving those funds for a specific project.
I personally would like to assign this to the Long Community Planning Committee to look into further, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Kayler.
Sure.
Councilmember Hayes?
Can you explain the, you know, the, I guess, reasoning for the butterflies? I saw some other winged objects on the one slide, other winged animals.
Well, we went to a wing project instead. We originally started out talking about butterflies.
Okay.
And then, we started talking about, as we started working through getting different groups to actually create concepts, it came into just a wing project. So, there's eagle wings, there's dragon wings to go with TU, so it became from a butterfly project straight to a wing project, to have all the different wings accounted for.
Okay. Thank you for that.
That's a good question. Any other questions? I think it's a great project. Thank you for doing it, and I love the cause, so happy to work with you and support it.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest?
No report, Madam President.
Okay. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman?
No report, Madam President.
Okay, and Director of Law, Zach Fowler?
Thank you. I do have a few items. So, first of all, just so you're all aware, in the prosecutor's office, the part-time prosecutor, and you all approved all that, is just that Alyssa Sedolka, who's the person that'll be the full-time, and we're going to contract for part-time, I've been told she starts with the county on Monday, so looking forward to having her join us next week, and bring her into the fold. July, beginning of July's been a bit busy. There's just a few things I think you all should be aware of. One, Department of Labor has made some changes as to qualifications for overtime, so they've raised the salary threshold. We'll be discussing it internally, but there could be some impact overall of the city budget, so don't be surprised if there's requests towards the end of the year, if we're a little short, and that's just because these overtime rules changed. Mentioned to you all earlier, it's more for public benefit, but the auditor, the fraud training, which you all will do at the Committee of the Whole in two weeks, but just a reminder, that's a new requirement, and we'll do it through this, for all the city employees as well, to make sure everyone gets their fraud training. And then, just the last thing is, I've been communicating with the, one of the editors that is our publisher of the codified ordinances, the book, as well as the website. Last time that was updated was November 21. Like I mentioned before, I'm just trying to work that through. It sounds like we're getting pretty close to having everything that they need. There may be an ordinance or two that we just might need to pass. Sometimes, there's just things where state law has changed, and we have an ordinance that mirrors it, and then we just didn't update it, and then we just need to update our codified ordinances to match. So, there could be one or two of those. And that concludes my report.
Over your credit card report.
Oh, yeah, thank you. No, I almost forgot.
Okay.
For end, I did pass to you all the second quarter for the credit card reports. All the department heads are in there. There's been no changes from the first quarter as far as cards issues or balance increases. Did look over all the credit card statements this morning. Everything looks good. And internally, the finance office is always keeping track to make sure there's receipts for all expenses, so I don't have any questions, any issues or concerns to raise to you all with the second quarter.
Councilmember Reesner?
Motion to accept the law director's report, credit card report dated July 1st, 2024.
There's a motion to accept the law director's quarterly credit card report dated July 1st. Is there a second, Councilmember Snay?
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 24-30, Hedges Boyer Park Wetland Project.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-30 will be assigned to the Long Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-31, the WPCLF agreement.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-31 will also be assigned to Long Community Planning Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-24-36, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the sewer revenue and parks budgets.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F-24-36 is prepared tonight as ordinance 24-54.
And that concludes the written communications.
Perfect. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing regarding the tax budget ordinance 24-43. Anyone wishing to address council regarding this can do so at this time. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing regarding this. Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Of course.
My name's Greg Slosser. I have been appointed a trustee back in March 1st, as a trustee to the Tiffin Eagles Area 402. During this time, we've had several meetings and things like this, and one of our things for our meeting was to bring up the application of applying for a DORA permit. And we've all understood in the past that, yeah, they have before in the past, and they have been declined, which I have no idea why, not really matters to me. But this past one here, we had applied for another one, and our mayor thankfully called us up and mentioned that it was declined. And obviously, my first question is, why? And I wasn't very certain. He said it was because we were disconnected from the community, from the community. And there's two different, different kinds of connections and definition. One is that you're disconnected by transportation means, railroads, sidewalks, et cetera. And that's what we thought it was. So, I met up with him. Graciously, he came down within 10 minutes, and we walked the area. And we did look at the sidewalks, and we did see 35 feet of sidewalk that was questionable. So, I passed the Vitak dentist's office. And I'm going to stop there for a minute, because then I went home to think about that disconnection. So, I looked up the definition of disconnection. It said there, there's also a definition that we are disconnected from the city. We don't, there's, well, I've actually wrote it down. He may be interested into understanding why I kind of got a little off-track here. Disconnected has several meanings. Separate from someone or something else, and not fitting well together, or understanding each other. I'm thinking, don't they like us? Is that the meaning? I don't know. So, I went into a two or three-day, laying in bed, thinking about this. So, my question is, what is the disconnect that I'm trying to find out why our permit was declined? Because either one, I have enough information up here to battle each definition. So, if you could tell me what definition we're going with, I'd like to continue with that. Yes, Mayor?
I'd be happy to answer that. So, originally, when looking at the map, the disconnection seems to be the transportation type of disconnection with the sidewalk.
Throw that away.
Which did not appear at first to be continuous from the property for the Eagles, down to where it connected up with the rest of the DORA boundary.
Correct. So, we're talking about boundaries, right?
Correct.
Okay. And now, I'm under this understanding that the boundaries can be, by state, the boundaries can be changed at any time. But I was also, when I visited the downtown office of the DORA, they said, told me it could only be done once every five years.
It has to be revisited once every five years.
That's by the cities. But how about the state? State says that the, from what I understand, when I read that stuff, is that you can have a re-boundary engineered thing at as many times as you basically want.
At any time, but...
So, I don't know where the five-year timeframe comes in.
That's a requirement for us as a city, for a city council to go back and revisit whether or not we want to keep the door the same, or change it at that time. That's a requirement for us. We can, at any specific time, go back and revisit it more often than that. So, for example, now, if we decide as a city that it's a good idea to change the door boundary at this time, even though it's not at the end of the five-and-a-half-year period, we can do that.
Well, that's probably what we're requesting. And not only, here's another thing. When I was, I forget where I was at, but some, another person, her name was Kim, she, they opened up the Keebler Shoes down at the AAA office, and she wanted me to express that she's interested in also a permit for the DORA, where the AAA... the AAA office is, just to keep that on the back burner. The other, I appreciate taking a quicker look at within a five-year period. Because one of the first remarks I heard from several people was our past mayor, I really don't know, but said it was too much work for the engineers. I hope that's not true. Too much work? Anybody disagree with that statement?
I'm happy to disagree with that, to say that it is a lot of work for our city engineer to have to change the maps. That's part of it. So most likely, there will be multiple requests if this was done, and that does require them to go in and change sightlines and everything else that's required. Our city engineer office has three people in it. They handle all the road projects and everything that's going on right now. They work with all the private utilities that are doing work. I can tell you, there's not a lot of extra time on their plates, so...
I respect that.
They are very busy.
Very much, because being past, we deployed at the Whirlpool Corporation to under superintendent of maintenance for 15 years, I hired plenty of engineers for projects. One thing I never liked to hear was, it's too much work. That never really stopped a lot of us. It just kind of struck myself a little bit.
I can show you his time sheets.
And I know that, being the guy I'm pushing, they didn't have much time either, so I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. So now that we have a little understanding I can take back to my group, and they also wanted me to bring up a little bit about the Tiffany Eagles. Maybe it's not appropriate this time, but I said I'd give it a shot. I just want to let you know, it's not like it used to be. This is under new leadership, committed leadership. Our motto is people helping people. And we are all about local, doing everything so far. We've hired to replace, repair, between landscaping, tree trimming, mowing the yard, planting flowers, buying flowers, it's all been done locally. We have not gone outside the edge of our community. Also, I want to let you know, in the last couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure to go to some of our charities that did not get paid as they were supposed to back in 2023. I was happy to hand out over $34,000 worth of charities, just to only 10 different local charities, all local. And also, at that same time, I had the pleasure of signing 12 2024 charity contracts, all local. And that total's going to be coming up to $44,000, which I already have half the checks made out, and makes more visits. But I want to tell you the happiness that I got when I handled these people out, these checks, you know, they were here to hear, and I might even tear up. But to see the stuff in their eyes, to see the donations that they thought they weren't going to get and receive, that's what us Eagles are about nowadays. And I'm looking forward to, I got eight of them in my office at the Eagles, and they're in a safe, and I cannot wait till I hand those out, because it's going to be almost like back-to-back paychecks, because they had to wait. So that's what the Eagles is about. So I hope you take the matter of fact that we are local, we want to be very part of the community, get back into the swing of things. It's not a clubhouse anymore. This is what we're going to get back to, and I'm going to make sure we do it. So if all the help that you can give me, I could please some of the 631 members that we have, they've been asking about the DORA, knowing that they've been declined for five years since plus. So I want to really thank you for this opportunity. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now under motions this evening. Councilmember Herniman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to table ordinance number 2024-48 in respect for having a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on July 15 to discuss it, so that we're following Tiffin Codified Ordinance 1160-04.
Thank you. There is a motion to table ordinance 24-48 to allow the Planning Commission meeting that is being held on July 15 to be, to take place. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones?
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the vote, please.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries with a vote of six to zero. Councilmember Kayler?
Madam President, I would move to table ordinance 2024-49 for the same reason, until after the Planning Commission meeting on July 15.
Thank you. There's a motion to table ordinance 24-49 to allow the joint Planning Commission meeting to take place on July 15. Is there a second? Councilmember Hayes?
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote again.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Motion carries with a vote of six to zero. Are there any other motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
We have ordinance number 20, 2024-43, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2025, directing the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of ordinance 24-43. Councilmember Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for passage of ordinance 2024-43.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 24-43. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman?
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-43 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-45, introduced by John Kayler, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real property on Water Street.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-45.
Ordinance number 2024-46, introduced by John Hayes, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the Fire Department budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-46.
Ordinance number 2024-48, introduced by Scott Herniman.
Just have that tabled, right?
Oh, yes, that's right. It was taped.
It's okay.
Sorry. And 49 tabled. Okay, on to 2024-52. Ordinance number 2024-52, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the annual budget.
Did you mean 53?
No, 52. Oh, we passed. My apologies.
That's okay.
That's what happened, 54. That explains it. Okay. Ordinance number 2024-53, introduced by John Hayes, an ordinance amending Section 2 of ordinance 23-95, the city pay ordinance, to increase wages for non-union and non-elected employees by 1% and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-53. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I'd like to move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-53, suspending council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 24-53. Is there a second? Councilmember Jones?
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, this is a wage increase for non-union and non-elected employees, so we want to make that clear, it is non-elected employees. Also, this is effective for July 1 upon passage, but this will be suspended so that it can start for the next pay period on July 7.
Perfect, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-53 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-54, introduced by Kevin Reesner, an ordinance amending the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94 to appropriate funds into the sewer budget and Parks Department budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-54. Councilmember Reesner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-54, suspending city council's reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-54. Is there a second? Councilmember Herniman?
I'll second that, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reesner?
As point of information on this, this is relating to the Finance Director's request for 24-36. It's for the sewers, and the Sewers Department, they had a change of employees, and it changes some of the allocation with health insurance and so forth. And it also includes a $1,000 donation of the parks, which we appreciate.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Herniman?
Yeah. Thank you, Forte Music, for putting that forth to the Parks Department with your donation for the music camp and stuff.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snee?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Herniman?
Yes.
Kayler?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Reesner?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-54 passes with a vote of six to zero.
That concludes the legislation.
Law Director?
Just for clarification, on ordinance 24-53, there's an emergency provision on there. Was there a vote on that?
We did on 24-53.
Okay.
Just not on 24-54.
There's not one on 54?
Yeah, yeah, right. Thank you. That concludes resolutions and ordinances. We are now under other business. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Councilmember Kayler?
Madam President, I would like to announce a meeting of the Law and Community Planning Committee on Monday, July 8, 2024, at 5:15 PM in council chambers.
Thank you.
Do I need to state the reasons?
Oh, yes, the reasoning.
And that would be to address mayor's request for legislation 24-30 and 24-31, and any other business that comes before the committee.
Thank you. Law Director?
John, I think you should include the T-Mac as part of your...
And we will also address the T-Mac. Is it the Butterfly Wing Project?
That's right. Thank you. Anything else to come before council this evening? Sorry, Councilmember Herniman?